And we'll move to the board's regular meeting, which is now called to order at 4:37 PM. We welcome all members of the public who have joined us this late afternoon. And instructions on making public comment are posted in item one on the agenda. And we will ask at each item if there is any public comment on that item. Catherine, can you do another roll call, please?
Absolutely. I'm here now.
Catherine, excuse me, I'm sorry. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez, I see you have your hand up.
I think trustee Baldini is in the attendees room right now. There he is.
Hold on. Oh, there he is.
Nobody puts Baldini in a corner.
Okay, here he comes. He was here earlier. All right, thank you, student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Baldini.
Here, thank you. Trustee Gonzalez.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
And trustee Dodd.
Here.
Catherine, you could open up the flag. We'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And.
Moving to item 3.3, adoption of the agenda. We are going to pull item 11.2 on the housing update. We will be moving that to march and having a much more substantive update and going over a real thorough overview of timeline moving forward. Are there any other changes to the agenda? And any comments from the board on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll adopt it by consensus. And moving on to item four, public comment on closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I have received none, and I don't see any hands raised.
Nice.
Oh, there is a hand raised, hold on. Uh, where are you? Here it is.
A Will S.
Yes, I'm going to... Let me see here. A lot of talk because of the... Ah, so I will promote to panelists because I can't give them the microphone.
Will, you're on mute right now. And when you're able to unmute yourself, you'll be able to talk. We can hear you. And would you please announce your name? You have three minutes for public comment.
Hello, my name is William Silver. Catherine, I did email you my comment to be read, but maybe it wasn't received. Is this for a closed session agenda item? So I'll go ahead and read the statement that I prepared. Dear Napa Valley College Board of Trustees, I am aware that tonight you may eliminate my position along with other campus-wide cuts. I urge you to inspect the conditions of the physical plant in order to understand the serious health and safety concerns affecting people, including children, on campus before making cuts to facilities. There is an overwhelming evidence that the condition of an educational facility has a direct impact on academic achievement and community well-being. During my time here at Napa Valley College, I have gained significant institutional knowledge and I am valuable, I'm a valuable resource for this school and incoming administration. If retained, I can identify and remediate serious health and safety issues and will continue to identify and implement cost-cutting measures. In addition, as the college is expanding its physical footprint with new construction projects in the works, this is not the time to make cuts to facilities. Thank you very much for your time, Will Silver, Assistant Director of Facility Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Catherine, is there any other public comment?
I do not see any. And, Mr. Silver, if you could please reemail me that, I just checked, I did not see it. It could be you emailed it to the wrong address.
Thank you very much, okay.
Seeing no more public comment, we'll close public comment on closed session items. Board will move into closed session covering four items. Conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Item 5.3, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release, and also a public employment matter under government code or ed code, section 54957. The board will move to closed session. Good. We'll return back to public session at 6:02 PM. Want to do an announcement of items from closed session. This evening in closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously took action to non-renew the senior manager of Welcome Center and Student Engagement, the Assistant Director of Facility Services, manager of Testing and Tutoring Center. For item seven, a public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear comments, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the board regarding any subject not appearing on the agenda for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I have not received any via email, and I don't see hands raised at this time.
Okay. Item eight, public employment. This is an action item, a consideration to enter into an employment agreement. Prior to considering this matter as required by government code section 54953 subsection C3, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract for classified administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with James Reeves as Vice President of Business and Finance, beginning February 14, 2022, through February 13, 2025. The Vice President will receive a monthly salary at range two, step H, on the Vice President's salary schedule, which is $15,155. Salary will be prorated for any partial month of service. The Vice President shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the administrative confidential employee group. Is there any public comment on this item, Catherine?
No, I have not received any, and I do not see any hands raised.
I'd welcome a motion from my colleagues.
Trustee Baldini, move approval.
Second, trustee Rios.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Looking forward to having James very soon. We'll move to a public hearing portion of this comment. I saw John Tudor. John, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Dodd.
Yeah, great to have you here. Why don't you start and start your presentation? And then for those, any participants wanting to provide any public comment, we'll follow up with that after you're done.
Thank you very much. So this is the final hearing on the draft map for the seven trustee areas for the period of 2022 through 2031. These trustee areas will take effect for those trustees who are on the ballot in 2022 now and for those trustees who are on the ballot in 2024. Those trustee areas will take effect prior to that election. So no one who is, will lose their position if anything changes with their trustee area at this time. Now, I do want to point out, the board and the public still have an opportunity to comment on the map that you'll be seeing. While this is a final hearing, it can be extended, the map can be revised, and we can have a second public hearing. You are facing a February 28 deadline. And so if you are, if the board does decide to have any revisions to the map, they can direct me to do that this evening, and then you will hold a special meeting, which would be part of any resolution continuing the hearing this evening with direction to me and our staff to revise the map. So this map was based on comments from many of... The map you'll be seeing in a moment with a member of our GIS agency staff, Andrew Eman. You are seeing tonight an interactive map. This is not the map on the district or site where people and the public can draw maps and change things. This is the map that was adopted by the Napa County Board of Education on February 1. For decades, the college and the Board of Education have adopted the same trustee areas. However, that is not a requirement, and this board has full authority to change this map in any way at once. And that is the discussion this evening, if that takes place. If the map is not changed, you would adopt a resolution this evening to adopt this map. The map is based on two primary reasons for any changes. The first primary reason is that the City of American Canyon, which was fully contained in trustee area three in the 2011 census data and has been most of trustee area three, if not quite all of trustee area three since 2011, has now grown greater than a single trustee area ideal population. You cannot fit the City of American Canyon into a single trustee area. So in consultation with board members from both the college and from the Board of Education, this map splits the City of American Canyon with the great majority of the city being in trustee area three and all of the schools in American Canyon, including the high school and the middle schools and the elementary schools, being in trustee area three with a small portion of the population in order to meet the requirement being in trustee area four. So that's the primary change. But there's an equally important change, and that is that during the last decade, between the 2010 census and the 2020 census, growth has been uneven in the Napa County. The trustee area seven and trustee area six actually shrank in population over this decade, while trustee area three grew in population, and to some extent, so did a couple of the other trustee areas located primarily in the city of Napa. And with that growth over the last decade, we, the trustee areas dropped below or went above the maximum deviation that the law provides. So when the primary goal of redistricting is to make sure that there's one person, one vote, and so that the voters in each trustee area are, not the voters, but the population in each trustee area is essentially equal. Now, for Congress, equal means one person. So the State Redistricting Commission had to hold the 52 congressional districts to within one person of each other. It's very tight at the federal level. For local cities and counties and districts like the college, there is a factor known as a 10% deviation. And that is calculated by adding the two greatest deviations. Normally, that's the district that's grown the least and is therefore minus, and the district that's grown the most, which is therefore plus. And in this case, over the past, and we won't go into this because we did this at the draft meeting, District six and seven shrank by about 6%, and trustee area three, the City of American Canyon, grew by about 7%. And therefore, the total deviation going into this redistricting was 14.5%. And therefore, in addition to getting the City of American Canyon into two trustee areas, we had to balance the population among the seven trustee areas so that the total deviation was less than 10%. Now, the map you're looking at, the total deviation is well under 10%. I believe it's 4.3%. So there's plenty of room, should the board decide that they want to revise this map in any way, to make any changes that you might want and still stay below the 10%. And I and the staff will bring this back to you for another final hearing if you go in that direction. If, however, you adopt this map this evening and adopt the resolution, you are well within the parameters that the law sets forth. So with that, unless there are any questions from the board members at this point, I will turn this over, thanks to Ms. Kittle, to Mr. Eman, and he will run you through the, how this interactive map works. And at that point, you'll be able to see how a member of the public will be able to find out who's in their trustee area, which trustee area they're in, and who represents them. So Chair Dodd, unless you have some other reason, I would ask Ms. Kittle to give Mr. Eman the floor and his screen.
You on it, Andrew?
I am, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for joining us.
All right, my pleasure. So I'm going to share my screen here. And so this interactive map is online for the public to view at any time at the URL seen here. It should be on printed materials and including all of our PDF maps for each of the districts. So with that, we'll load this up, and it brings you to a page that kind of, an overview of everything here. And the purpose of this map is to allow anybody to, you know, search by their address or by their parcel number or property in Napa County and find out what district they reside in, while also allowing for any kind of interactive zooming and panning within the map to explore the boundaries and where they are in relation to other boundaries. So with that, this does work on a mobile device, and there's this option for using your current location. And so you can plug that right in, and it'll take you to where you are. And I'll use our office address real quick as an example, just to show how that works. And so you'll see it dropped a pin on that location and highlighted that district. It is part of a couple of search options here. Addresses, address parcel, or assessor parcels, and the World Geocoding Service, but it is restricted to addresses that reside in Napa County. So you can't search for things in, you know, Washington DC or what have you. But with that, you can also, from this result panel, see exactly what area it is, while also allowing this map tab to be available to zoom in as far as you would like. And from there, you can zoom in to see parcel boundaries, see the delineation between districts, and even address points within those. And so each district in results come with this PDF map, and each one of those for each district is essentially an outline or the extent of that district in comparison to the others. And so I'll go through each one of those, and each one of these maps, if printed out, has a link at the bottom back to the interactive online map. And so when you initially load it up, you've got all those PDF maps listed out here by their respective district. There's a countywide one as well, showing all of them together. There's a specific one that shows just the City of Napa's boundary and all the districts within that.
Andrew, I think we do have that published on our board docs website. I think John sent that over earlier, all the different maps.
Great. So yeah, each one, it's a little repetitive, but they're all in here. The extent, again, is just zoomed in on each district, and I think that about covers it.
Andrew, can I jump in a minute? So I do want to point out one thing. Can you go to trustee area seven for me, please?
Yes.
Andrew. So as I discussed at your meeting on the 18th of January, the college board and the Board of Education both extend into that portion of Sonoma County on the western side of this map, right there, which is part of the Calistoga Joint Unified School District. I just want to cover that briefly for those members of the public who are listening tonight. Because the Calistoga Joint Unified School District extends into that area, and the reason for that is it's safer and better for the children from that area to come down to Calistoga than to go over the mountains to the nearest schools in the Sonoma County area. And so since the beginning of the unified school districts back in the 60s, Calistoga Joint Unified School District has served these students and their families in Sonoma County. And when the college board was created, the college was created, it included that, as did the Board of Education. So these Sonoma County residents vote for the trustee in trustee area seven for both the college and the Board of Education. Now, one thing Andrew pointed out earlier, and I just want to confirm, the voters and residents of Sonoma County, if they look at this map, they cannot search in that area because our GIS capability is solely within the county boundaries. So we're going to work with Sonoma County to make sure that their map will show, their trustee area map will show this area as being in Napa County. And if Sonoma County residents want to look at this map, once it's finally adopted by your board and by the Board of Education, we'll make sure that Sonoma County residents who live in trustee area seven will be able to find that on the Sonoma County side. They won't be able to on the Napa County side. So with that, I'm done. Andrew, did there is anything you wanted to add?
I don't think so. I think if you choose this option for the World Service, it does, I think the, it's not necessarily just this area within the county boundary. I think it's a, an extent of the map itself. So if there are addresses along the county border, they should still appear in the search. However, there won't be any results if they don't fall within one of these actual district boundaries.
Great, thanks, Andrew. I'll test that out. I know some addresses in trustee area seven in Sonoma County, and you can teach me how to use the World Geocoding Service. So that'll be a great learning experience for me. So with that.
Yeah. John, you just went on mute, but I think you're kicking it back over.
Yeah, I was, sorry. I muted before I finished speaking.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Andrew, for being here, and John, thank you for all your work too. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I see no public comment at this time, and I have not received any.
I don't see any either. Okay, we'll close public comment on this item. Any questions for the board? Or comments? I see trustee Baker.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. I was just wondering, I spent some time reviewing the maps in different areas over the last month, and I have some concern about the number of changes that are proposed. And I understand that we, that the intent, that part of the intent was to stay in line with the Board of Education. But, and I also appreciate that the growth and change in demographics in American Canyon has made change necessary. And looking at that my area, that area myself, I can understand the challenge that created. I think the work that Mr. Tudor's team has done to redistrict, to redistrict that area is excellent, and it does a good job of making sure that the residents, particularly those with children in our K-12 schools, who are future students, have good local representation. However, I'm not really understanding the changes made to the other areas. I can imagine that, since I pointed this out at the last meeting, that this may sound a little self-serving, but is it just me who's being drawn out of their area? There's actually three trustees being drawn out with this map, and realizing that prompted me to look at it a little more critically. We spend a lot of time learning about communities of interest, and I walk a minimum of four and a half miles every day, and I walk in my area. And I can say definitively that my area is a community of interest because I know these residents. I see them at the park and at the grocery store, their kids pass my house on the way to school. I've lived in this area for 14 years, and I find it hard to believe that it's changed enough in the last decade to warrant such a dramatic way and the change to the way it's represented. And so when I went home after the last meeting and was bemoaning to my husband that I had been drawn out and basically received a three-year pink slip, his response was that I should take it as the blessing that it obviously is, but ultimately, this isn't really about me or any one of us, it's about the communities we serve. So if the rest of the board is agreeable, I'd like to propose that we ask Mr. Tudor's team to take another look and rethink the changes to the areas outside of American Canyon to see if there's a way to redraw to account for those demographic shifts but in a way that more closely resembles our current area boundaries.
Thanks. And John, I see your hand up, but I'd love to get through all the board members first, and then we could just get all the questions out there in direction, and you can follow up to all the questions at one at a time. Michael, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, trustee Dodd. I too lived in the same house for 30 years and have, I like to think of very good understanding of the area of the city and note that the change from previously, yes, driven by changes in demographics and understanding the area. John, I appreciate your work, as well as Andrew, and to protect the equity priority communities, as well as those that are underserved. I find that of paramount importance. Though looking at the change, it is, again, dramatic and asset. We relook at that area. Myself, I find myself in the county and removed from the city after 30 years, and just believe that there could be some a deeper, deeper look into the, into the area. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board to John? Seeing none. John, I don't know if you need any response. I heard a couple of things, but.
I'm happy to respond, and part of this is timing. The Board of Education just went first, just because of those are the dates of their meetings. And so part of this map, as I said earlier, both trustee Goff and trustee Snyderman from, Cindy Beederman, excuse me, from the Board of Education worked with me on trying to resolve the American Canyon issue. And thank you, trustee Baker, for saying we, they did a good job because it was primarily them. But the other members of the Board of Education asked me to make some changes, and in making those changes, I am agnostic as to where anyone lives. That's my rule as the registrar of voters. I'm simply looking, as you mentioned, at communities of interest. However, communities of interest are by definition other people's definitions than mine. And so when I made some of the changes for the Board of Education, it turns out that I created what may be differences in the communities of interest in several areas. And so that is perfectly acceptable for this board tonight to ask me to review the changes that were made. You do not have to match the Board of Education, and therefore, we can have two different maps and two different sets of trustee areas. My guess is that... My guess is that no matter what changes I bring back to you, if you do ask me to bring them, that 90% of the trustee areas will still match. It's just some of the areas where communities of interest may be different between the college and the Board of Education that we'll take a look at. And we will have a, assuming you take that position tonight at the request of trustee Baker and trustee Baldini, I will be back to you by tomorrow with a revised map, which we will then convert into an interactive map that Mr. Eamon and I will, assuming Mr. Eamon's available, one of the members of the GIS agency will be available at whatever special meeting you designate. And I'm perfectly happy and willing to do that, thanks to this wonderful tool, Districtor. As Ms. Baker and Mr. Baldini and others of you have discovered, it's an easy tool to use. It keeps track of your population. I'm sure it will not impact the deviation parameter that we've set of 10% and not even get close to it. So we're available and ready, whatever the board directs. You have, as I said earlier, two choices. One is to ask me by motion to make changes to the map, which I'm happy to do. The other is by motion to adopt this map and the resolution that's before you. It's no trouble because the map itself is the legal description of the trustee area. There are no meets and bounds descriptions, you know, street lanes or parcel boundaries that have to be drawn. It's a very simple and fluid process, and it will not cause a great deal of heartburn for us or the GIS team or our consultants, redistricting partners. If you decide you want me to tweak the map, I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, John. And did you say, does anyone else have any questions? I was gonna go. You said you'd be able to, because I share similar concerns to trustee Baker and trustee Baldini. I should say too, I really, I like, you know, in light of the population increase in American Canyon, that totally, it makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it, unsurprisingly, at trustee Goff's suggestion. But in terms of getting it turned around, I know there's pretty demanding timelines with respect to finalizing and improving the map. When would we need, or how quickly? You said you could have a map ready tomorrow? I thought you said that, but that seemed pretty ambitious.
No, we can have a new map for year review tomorrow. However, I do ask that you set your special adoption meeting as late as you can in February.
Okay.
Because we need a lot of behind the scenes work. The map will be there, ready for you to look at. But once that map is done, you won't have to approve it. I've gotten enough information tonight to know what we're talking about in terms of communities of interest. I'm sure that that map will pass muster at your special meeting. But we have a lot of work to do from drawing it in District R to turning it into that interactive map that Mr. Eamon shared with you.
Right.
And so that's why I need time. And my suggestion would be as late as this board can set a special meeting in February, even as late as Monday, the 28th. You do have a deadline. Your deadline is the month of February because you have to turn your resolution and the map into the Committee on School District Organization, which is run by the Board of Education. And it's the same members. Their trustees are that committee. So we have that timeline. So as much time as, given the schedules of the busy trustees, as late as you can set that special meeting, and if you can put that in the resolution tonight, that will, in the motion tonight directing, if you go that direction, then I'll move forward and we'll know when to come back.
Understood. Thank you, John. Trustee Rios?
Yes, thank you. I, just a couple, I'm not opposed to this, but it feels a little odd. Is there a chance, Mr. Tudor, that in looking at this, that maybe you say, well, maybe there is a community of interest here that we've affected or, you know, cut in half or whatever, that you'll come back and trustee Baker will still be out? You know, is, are we just doing this just to keep her in her district? That's what feels a little odd to me.
Well, I think trustee Rios, that there is a specific prohibition for cities and counties in looking at either incumbency or political candidates. They are specifically prohibited under the Fair Maps Act. That Fair Maps Act does not apply to school districts or special districts like the Regional Park and Open Space District, which is also redistricting. So that is not a prohibition. I think that the, I think the description of what trustee Baker gave and trustee Baldini, the interesting thing that this change has moved his trustee area into more of the county than being almost entirely city oriented. As you know, trustee area two is entirely within the city. It's the only one entirely, I believe, in the city. No, I think that my look will take into account all of the comments that were made this evening.
Great, thank you. Makes me feel better that that's okay.
Yeah, so trustee Rios, is that your hand again?
Nope, just trying to put it down.
Too quick. Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my area also, I'm fairly confident currently is all within city. Maybe some parts on the west side there are not, but I'm pretty confident it's all within the city. And the new area that's drawn is almost entirely in the county. So it, yeah, same as Michael's comments.
Understood. And I think what I've, what I've heard, and maybe can call for a motion, is really that I think everyone, those that asked questions and spoke earlier, I think there's some support with the way that the districts through South County look like, but wanting to get a little bit more commensurate with the lines and the current boundaries based on, I think, some thoughtful reasons that trustee Baker and trustee Baldini I mentioned in terms of, you know, those respective communities of interest at neighborhoods and so on and so forth. So if that sounds right to me, I mean, Catherine, when would we have a special hearing? Yeah, special hearing date? What opportunities are available in terms of the latest dates in February?
Yes, so we're contemplating a February 17th special meeting. If Mr. Tudor could be ready by then, we would be able to add it to that. We could also have a February 24th meeting. Those are both on Thursdays at the usual time.
And I see trustee Goff stand up.
Yeah, I apologize that my screen's off. My internet is being funky tonight. But I want to strongly discourage adding another item to our agenda on the 17th. I think we have a lot to handle on that special meeting, so I would strongly suggest we we don't add it to that agenda.
Okay, so February 24th is a Thursday. We could do that.
I'm not available on the 24th. I'm leaving the country, so I would I would rather have one long meeting and discuss everything than two meetings, but that's just me. But I'm not available on the 24th, and I would really like to be there.
And I kind of fall on the same line, trustee Goff. I totally understand and respect your comments as Chair of the Search Committee. But I'm just warning if the board can adequately prepare, knowing that we've got a lot on that special meeting agenda and going through the maps that John will be able to send over. I think John suggested he might even have a map ready tomorrow. So if we're able to, the board members are really able to prepare and provide any sort of comments or feedback, just so we don't have a lot of back and forth in terms of small changes or any additional changes. I'm just, I'm just worried, we might not need more than 10 minutes to go through everything. So I wanted to get your feedback on that.
I think if it's a 10-minute, yes, let's go, it'll be fine, but it's going to be a fairly heavy meeting.
Okay. Here's what I do, I think if.
What else on the 7th? I'm sorry, what is all, what all are we doing on the 17th?
Well, I need to take a motion first, but I think what we're talking about is if we were going to call a special, because I'd like that date to be in the motion. If we are going to call a special meeting day, would it be, I think, the 17th, which is what we're having in terms of board prep and training for the president interview and process and training for that? Can we do this and make a final approval on the map on that same meeting date?
Wouldn't it kind of depend on all of us looking at that map beforehand, maybe talking to Mr. Tudor if there are issues? I'd rather have this all one meeting rather than two. But I think it really depends on us looking at those maps ahead of time and making sure that we don't have any problems before the meeting.
So we also have a tight range, a tight window for the special meeting for the hiring training. And we couldn't move that out any farther because the following week is interviews. And so the 17th is the latest you can go for the hiring training. And I'm not sure if Mr. Tudor can have the maps ready for you on the 17th.
Right. John, I see your hand up too. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, that we agendize it, and I'm going to call for a motion that we move it to a special on the 17th. If we don't feel that we're adequate, and John just can't, and John, we would totally understand if that's the case, cannot get, you know, maps for us to look at so we can be adequately prepared before the 17th, then we ultimately can continue that item to the 24th. I'm sorry, trustee Deluna, I'm hoping that's not the case, but I'd like to, you know, have a motion right now, you know, based on the direction that we've heard tonight, to give John the opportunity to revise the maps and come back on the 17th, hopefully for a short item. If we don't think it's going to be a short item or the maps aren't ready, then we'll move it to the 24th.
Chair Dodd will be ready on the 17th. What might not be ready is an interactive map, but that's not the basic map. The basic map is the Districtor map. And the board members will be able to see that beginning tomorrow. And so the 17th is doable as long as you're not expecting the interactive map. And there's really no reason for the interactive map other than we will have the nine PDF maps for you to look at on the 17th, which will take just a few minutes. We may not have it interactive because of the time it takes to build that. But I don't think that that is a, that's not a deal breaker for being ready on the 17th.
I'm old school. I don't need the interactive. But thanks, John. Well, to that end, you know, I would welcome a motion to give John some direction in terms of the comments tonight to revise the maps and that we can reconvene and discuss and hopefully approve those maps at a special meeting on February, Thursday, February 17th.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second? Thank you, trustee Goff.
Second.
I'll do a roll call. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much, John and Andrew, for bearing with us.
Not at all. It's an important decision, and it's something the board should have as much input into as it wants. It's your map, not mine.
Okay. Well, seeing, I think Catherine, where we are with agenda items 9.2 and 9.3, I guess we'll be moving those to the 17th as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, and all those are effectively just resolutions and approvals needed to affect, I guess, the new map. So those shouldn't take long either, in light of, I appreciate trustees that I got, comments about having a busy schedule on the 17th. Let's see. So I think we're on a board report. And let's see here, I did want to, you know, before we kind of kick off the board reports, did have some, really a nice opportunity to the ACCJC conference to go over how other boards are doing their reports. And, you know, I kind of, I've been seeing them doing, maybe I can save this for more comments, but you know, I am thinking about maybe revising this further, potentially moving it later towards the agenda. So, and also maybe reducing the comment time from five minutes to three minutes, really just consistent with, I think, public comment. And that's what I've seen also in Napa County, you know, board supervisors and city council as well for all five cities. That's what their, you know, public comment time limit is. So just mentioning that and this thinking about, we're not going to do this, I think, in the next, you know, couple of months, but would appreciate any sort of input on that if you do, you know, in future, you know, public comments and going over reports, including board reports as well. So, but I'll move to 10.2, Academic Senate Report. Dr. Tahada?
Good evening, everyone. I wish to acknowledge that we are on unceded, the unceded land of the Patwin, Mishwal, Muttitu, Mayakma, and Mewak people. I am speaking from the unceded land of the Aloni. I extend my respect to the citizens of these nations and their ancestors, recognizing that this land acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that continues to be done to indigenous people, our land, and our water. I am happy to report that the Academic Senate has approved the creation of an Ethnic Studies Department. I wish to call into remembrance the work of those that came before us who only dreamed of having an Ethnic Studies Department. So I am honored to be able to communicate this to the board. I am also happy to report that we are moving forward with the revision of AP 6200, which is our budget process modeling the effective participatory shared governance structure and practices. And I think it's actually helping us understand and helping us understand the process and moving forward. The Academic Senate leadership is participating in the diversity, equity, and inclusion colloquia, deepening our understanding of the value of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and strengthening the bonds within our Napa Valley College community across constituent groups. In close collaboration with the Academic Affairs Office, the Academic Senate has worked to ensure that all dual enrollment and CCAP instructors meet minimum qualifications. Let's see. And I think what I'd like to say is that the Academic Senate continues to be concerned with the Board of Trustees and the interim president's seemingly disconnection from the work of the Academic Senate and the impact that the fiscal crisis is having on morale and trust of the Napa Valley College community. This concludes my report. Thank you very much. And I'll be back to give the union report unless you want me to do it at this time.
And Dr. Del, why don't you go ahead since you've got the hot mic?
Okay, that, okay, so putting on, this is in place of my colleague Christie Iwamodo, President of the Faculty Association. The report reads as follows. Negotiations are ongoing. We're working on the 16-week academic calendar. Details will be going out to the faculty early next week. We are discussing administrative evaluations. The Faculty Association looks forward to working closely with the Academic Senate and the district to come to an agreement. Christie will be co-facilitating the State Leadership Academy at the Community College Association Conference this weekend. Morale is still very low among faculty. It can be very overwhelming. I get emails from faculty talking about feeling overworked and unappreciated. Too many. I'm not sure how to fix the issues that are in front of us, but then again, that was not what I was hired to do. And that concludes my colleague's report. Thank you very much.
I was on mute, excuse me. I called it in. Item 10.3, Administrative Confidential Senate Report. Bob Harris, please.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and Napa Valley College community. Since our last meeting in January, much has changed and formal notification and expectations to address our situation has been made. To recap, the day of November 10th. To recap, the day of November 10, board meeting, is when the campus as a whole learned of the specific notification by the ACCJC that the college was being placed on enhanced monitoring as a result of our lack of compliance with processes and procedures related to the multitude of campus operations, but most specifically related to fiscal management planning and the administration of same. Then came the subsequent notification that the fiscal crisis management assistant team, citizens team, was requested to visit the campus to assess our financial situation, financial processes, and overall operation. This all occurred in basically three months through this day. Immediately thereafter, Mr. Oscar Daharo was appointed as acting president, and he immediately enacted a task force to address AP 6200, as well as work closely with campus personnel with the FICMAT team when they were on campus in December. Mr. Daharo acted quickly, decisively, and initiated a series of actions to immediately address some, but not all of our deficiencies. In January, Dr. Frost came to campus to address the situation and to set the campus on a course to rectifying our deficiencies as outlined by ACCJC and the soon-to-be recommendations by FICMAT. We have suffered a significant decline in enrollment, albeit not dissimilar from our sister campuses around the state and not solely as a consequence of COVID. Across constituency study from a planning and budget subcommittee determined that our campus is overstaffed in all constituency groups as compared to campuses of our size and scope. If anyone on campus was or is not aware of these facts, it certainly is not because that that information has been hidden or kept secret. It has been open. As we know, the Administrative Confidential Group is not represented and is the most vulnerable when fiscal challenges arise. Typically, the discussion heard around any college campus or in meetings is, we have too many administrators, or if you want to save money, cut the administration. Occasionally, such statements are not wholly inaccurate, but rarely is it solely appropriate to state that the cause of overspending is singularly related to administrative employees. Moreover, if not somewhat ironic, the Administrative Confidential Group at Napa Valley College has not seen across the board increase in pay in six years. I would be remiss if I did not speak up for my Administrative Confidential colleagues and note that these points, individually and in tandem, take a huge toll on the mental and emotional wellbeing of folks who are doing nothing more than trying to do the job that they were hired to do. A college campus is not a private enterprise, and there are processes and procedures that are the expectations of all constituency groups. We often hear from faculty regarding 10 plus 1 in the language of Title IX regarding relying primarily on or collegial consultation and shared governance. We hear from the classified professionals about their role in participatory governance. Napa Valley College has very fine people who make up the faculty, classified professional, and administrative confidential groups, and we are now losing some, if not many of these folks, due to prior mismanagement and lack of, and prior lack of transparency. Many of the issues that we are facing are primarily because the common language of higher education was not respected or adhered to, and we are now losing colleagues in our environment laden with a significant lack of trust. Errors, whether by accident or design, have been made, and we must now rectify those errors via very difficult decisions. Higher education processes can be clunky, slow, frustrating, and are often viewed as inefficient. But following established processes being open and transparent and engaging in open dialogue will make the pill a bit easier to swallow. We have before us the opportunity to set a course on a trajectory to which we can all invest. Otherwise, we risk doing further damage that we can, that can be long, long lasting. Thank you for your time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Bob. Item 10.4, Associated Students. Marcus Texan is here?
Yes. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Frost, college administrators, faculty, and the college community. Though the pandemic continues, our students continue to make heavy contributions to student life. Club rush will be held over a span of two days, February 16th and 17th. Of course, students will receive pizza for checking out the clubs. ASNBC is also hard at work preparing for this semester, as well as cosponsoring and assisting in collegial Black History Month activities. In fact, the Student Life Office, we assisted the Student Life Office in setting up the walk, the gallery walk in the library this week. Looking into the future, March will be an incredibly busy month, as several of our members will be going to Washington DC for the National Student Advocacy Conference, held by the American Student Association of, excuse me, of Community Colleges. In April, we will be sending a group of students to attend the Student Senate for California Community College General Assembly to vote on resolutions and participate in several workshops. I would also like to announce the resignation of ASNBC President Janine Mizono. While I have this opportunity, I would also like to commend her for all her work towards the college community and students. Janine was accepted into a dream program at Chico State, pursuing a bachelor's degree in nursing. Many of her peers and colleagues look up to her as an inspiration. Her peers describe her as awesome, hardworking, compassionate, caring, determined, and productive as she aimed to get students involved and keep everyone informed. Janine always had an open mind and adapted to change, determined to make student life more inclusive and accommodating for our diverse student body. I'm incredibly grateful for all of Janine's work to the student body and the college community. I would like to wish her luck on her journey throughout nursing school. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Marcus, and best to Janine. 10.5, Classified Association Report. Dixie Larson?
Hi. I don't have a report, but I do have a statement. I have to say, as a classified professional and a leader, I'm very distressed and concerned about the events of the last few weeks and months. I also have to say that our confidence in leadership at this time is at an all-time low. How could no one, including you, the Board of Trustees, not know that finances were in such disarray? Forgive me if this is an ignorant question, but is it normal for a Board of Trustees to take a budget presented to you at face value only and not understand where the money is spent, why it is spent, and if the spending makes sense? Does the Board of Trustees have no responsibility to their communities to explain where the community's money is actually going? I know at this time we can only go forward, and this conversation is counterproductive, but I hope going forward there is a plan in place, besides hiring a different person, to monitor the spending and budget more closely and to understand the budget and spending so this never happens again. It's very painful to see what's happening to our colleagues right now and what might happen to more in the next few weeks, months, and especially to no fault of ours. Regarding the hiring of the new president superintendent, I would strongly encourage the board to hire a president that is going to serve the needs of the entire campus and all constituent groups. I hope to impress upon you that the wishes of the campus may not always, oh, sorry, align with those of the board, but a good leader can balance opposing interests through transparency. In this time of turmoil and frustration, we need a leader that we can have faith in and trust to lead us forward. When the campus does not trust its leadership, there is no path forward that will fix the issues. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dixie. I don't think it's counterproductive at all. I think we don't examine how we got here. We're going to end up making the same mistakes as you, I think, alluded to. So thank you for your report. At 10.6, Classified Senate. Danielle Alexander?
Yes, hello. Good evening. I have a statement to read as well. Having had the opportunity to discuss the state of the college with a diverse group of classified professionals since taking office, it has come to my attention that many classified professionals are disappointed with the current state of the college. People are discouraged by the lackluster oversight of administrators over the past many years that have led to the dire circumstances that are negatively impacting the school we all adore. The classified professionals, the faculty, and the administrators who are here now trying to clean up years' worth of detritus. Many classified professionals have voiced their concerns about the budget, potential loss of jobs, confusion about and distrust of this board, and its seemingly disconnected understanding of the day-to-day operations of the school, as well as the feeling that the classified professionals are often seen and treated as the dispensable disposable group on campus. What was described time and time again by countless people during Flex Day as low morale on campus can perhaps be better understood as distrust and concern and fear. Every day, the classified professionals show up with our full selves to do the best jobs we can do. We do this with antiquated tools, technology that is dilapidated due to poor allocation of funds, and with an edge in the air wondering if we're going to be fired due to inept budget practices of which we have little knowledge and no control. Every day, we find a way to be positive, as positive as possible, and we work to find workarounds for everything under the sun to keep things moving as well as possible for our students. A good portion of our lives are spent here. We are not aspiring politicians elected for a short haul. We are not pinch hitters. We are not here today and gone tomorrow. We are the daily committed backbone of this school. We take enormous pride in Napa Valley College, and we feel embarrassed at what some have allowed it to become. It's very discouraging for us. In an effort to help build and create solutions, the classified professionals are gathering, we are training, and we fully intend to show up and be part of the shared governance of this college beginning now. We look forward to co-creating NBC and watching our work bear the fruit we all wish to grow. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Danielle. Item 11.1, President and Cabinet Reports. Dr. Frost?
I was, I was still a little focused on the last report. That was, that was very, very well received from my part. We've got a number of reports under the President and Cabinet Reports. I want to start with the Keys Program. Well, wait a second. Public Affairs and Communications Update. Holly, I'm just going to go in order of what's listed for those of you waiting for your report. So Holly, can you go first?
I actually had not planned to provide an update tonight.
Okay, then I'll go straight on, thank you, to the Keys Program. Charo?
Good evening. I would like to welcome Christina Rivera, Training and Development Manager, to go over a training program that we developed over a year ago and had a significant amount of our administrators go through this one-year management training program. And so with that, Christina Rivera, thank you.
Thank you, Charo. I would like to congratulate our Keys participant, which was a year-long program, and there was a lot of hard work and dedication to the program. Tonight is about celebrating their accomplishments. I enjoyed watching the progress you all were making and truly wish the best for all of you in your future endeavors. The goals for the Key Programs, we had three of them. Train our managers to have foundational skills to serve as managers. Goal two, because our focus are students, we wanted to make sure everyone is receiving the same level of information for diversity and equity. We contracted with the RP Group and Allied Path Consulting, and with their representatives, we were able to incorporate diversity and equity for the purpose of improving how we interact with each other, as well as interacting with our students. And in keeping equity and inclusivity as a focus for managers and they are making decisions, as they are making decisions on behalf of the district. There were six courses developed throughout the year. Goal three was really about the managers, the mental health and safety, and also how they can provide a level of safety for their staff. We could have not have done the Keys Program without the IFE grant that we received last year, so that helped us with the year-long program. Now, what I would like to do is to turn it over to an excellent video that the Keys Group developed. You're only going to view a portion of the video tonight, but it is an excellent video. I encourage you to watch the entire video, and I know that you guys were given the email address earlier. Thank you.
Is there supposed to be sound?
There's supposed to be sound.
When you go to share it, I think you have to check the box at the bottom left corner?
... management skills. There's going to be a better understanding of how to be a more compassionate...
Hold on, okay. If I go to share? It was working that second time. Okay, let me try it again.
... communicator and how to engage and motivate my team. It has taught me how to effectively manage projects in order to achieve institutional and departmental goals. I recommend this program to both new and current managers. This program provided me with information and resources that captured many of the basic concepts for management and managers. As managers, we are responsible for using the organization's resources to help achieve its goals. The program offered opportunities to learn new skills and techniques, brighten carryout my management responsibilities in ways that make a difference. Many of our Key Sessions presented ideas that challenged us to tear down barriers we had created for ourselves. We learned to no longer shy away from chaos or discord, but from these areas of discomfort come growth. But from these areas, we truly began to emerge. What about going on our creativity flourishes? With the Keys Program, I now have more tools for my manager's toolbox, and I now understand more of the processes than NBC. Did not memorize everything I was exposed to. No one can, but I know where to look if I need to be re-inspired, if I need an idea reinforced, if I need a how-to guide to follow. And this is just in my notes and other documents from this year. I also have my cohort reach option. I will miss being a part of this program, and I fully support Keys continuing here at NBC. The Keys Program can be an essential tool for all managers. As a manager, I believe that leading from the middle means to lead by example, which starts with me, both as a leader and the follower. In taking steps to become a more effective leader, I recognize the importance in setting clear expectations and providing guidelines to members of my team. No matter what our model of leadership is, whether we supervise one employee or many employees, the potential is always there for us to leave if we decide to do so. Leadership is a big job, and real leadership happens when we take opportunities to widen our capacity for discovery and growth. I am a more qualified applicant for supervisory role and management positions because the Keys Program has given me the knowledge and skills to effectively lead and motivate a diverse team. The program has allowed me to build my toolbag, the supervisor role skills, to prepare me to be an effective coach and leader, as well as provide me with a better understanding of the processes in that college. Before entering the program, I was nervous about applying for supervisor role or management positions because of the lack of experience, so I shied away. I am no longer nervous as the program has given me the knowledge, skills, and abilities needed to be a successful supervisor. I highly recommend this program for all supervisors, managers, and those that are looking to expand their skill sets to be a more competitive applicant for higher-level positions.
I started the Keys Program last spring, expecting to learn a lot about the nuts and bolts of management and Napa Valley College. And I did. But I also learned a ton about teams and people, about myself, and about the six incredible women that I shared the first cohort with. Thank you to Christina and Charo in HR, doing some wonderful program, and I would highly recommend it. Thank you.
I want to give special thanks to Christina Rivera for all of her work, along with Michelle Bullock, whose work as a part of the team for Training and Development. As Christina mentioned before, this program, along with another program which I will bring next month at the board meeting for our classified professionals, was supported by the IFE grant. We will be rolling out the Keys Program in the fall again. This is a year-long program. This is to support all of our administrative confidential employees, and this is a very important initiative for the college, and we intend to continue our efforts in Training and Development for both administrator confidentials and the classified professionals. We will be back next month to highlight our classified program, which is another year-long program, and we have graduates from that program as well. Christina, thank you. Job well done. Thank you.
Was there any HR update in addition, Charo?
I just want to quickly let the board know that we... I just want to quickly let the board know that we, um, we invited Keenan and Cal Stirs and Cal Pers to our campus. We have held group sessions and personal counseling sessions in regards to our offer of a early retirement incentive, and we look to come back in April with some information as to where we stand in hopes of asking the board to support and approve us in entering the, um, early retirement incentive contracts. Thank you.
I want to turn next, if I can, to Robin Warnall and Jim McGowan to give us an accreditation update. The, the timing is, is now with accreditation, so I really appreciate you both being here to, to share some words with us tonight.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Frost, and good evening, Board. Uh, Jim and I are here to provide, oh, Catherine, could you, um, put up the, thank you, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, so Jim and I are here to provide a brief update focusing on some key accreditation activities that have occurred or will occur between January and March. Uh, now that the ICER has been submitted and our peer review team has begun reviewing our report, we have officially entered a new phase of the comprehensive review process. So to signal that we have entered the external peer review phase, we have updated the template for our updates. And the graphic, the graphic that you see here, um, is taken from the ACCJC's Formative Summitive Guide for Peer Review Team Members, and it outlines all of the steps that occur between the submission of our ICER to the ACCJC back in December and the action that the Commission will take on NBC, which is roughly one year from now in January 2023. So Jim and I will be using this graphic to structure our updates for you in the coming months, and this evening we will be focusing on the first two steps, the Team ICER review, and the core inquiries.
Jim? Thank you, Robin. Catherine, can you move to the next slide? The other slide? Uh, so we're talking about events in January and February tonight. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, speak to you tonight, and hello, campus community. Um, so, uh, early in the year, the ACCJC distributed our ICER to the peer review team members, um, and so that's been the focus of the activities, uh, in January. Um, we've also posted the ICER, uh, on the accreditation webpage, uh, the NBC website, um, and, uh, that posting includes a link for, um, the, the public to make, uh, direct comments to the ACCJC regarding the ICER. Um, that's all there. On January 20th, Robin, um, uh, myself, Dr. Frost, met with our review team chair and co-chair to go over, uh, expectations, timeline, and, uh, really sort of kick off the process, uh, of the, um, the ICER review that's, uh, taking place, uh, in January and taking place in February. So, um, that is underway. As the team is reviewing our ICER, Robin and I are beginning to, uh, move towards implementing the improvement plans that came out of the ICER development process. Um, and while I'm on the subject of those improvement plans, um, I would like to take this opportunity to, uh, remind the Board of Trustees that, uh, during the development of the ICER, the campus community identified those most important, uh, BPs and Ap's that needed attention, including DPs and Ap's related to mission, related to institutional planning, budget preparation, decision-making, review and revision of policies and procedures, and accreditation. I know that came up, uh, earlier today. Um, after identifying, the campus community then helped develop improvement plans to address those deficiencies built on our, uh, participatory governance processes and structures. These improvement plans were approved by this board in December. So I would just encourage the board to, uh, review those improvement plans, um, as the board considers the next steps, uh, with respect to accreditation. Um, so with that in mind, the implementation of those improvement plans has already begun, um, and, and, and will continue, uh, in the coming weeks and months. Activities, uh, in February directly related to our ICER review, um, tomorrow, we have a, a visit by, uh, Dr. Catherine Webb, our liaison to ACCJC. She'll be offering a training to the campus community at 11:30 to prepare us for, uh, the big day, and, uh, the big day is, uh, February 23rd and 24th, so the big days. Uh, the 23rd, there will be two events, a meet and greet where the, the peer review team will be with us, um, virtually, of course, uh, 2:45 to 3:45. That is, um, open to, um, campus leadership, the board, uh, board, members of the Board of Trustees, uh, and, and various groups that were involved in the development of the ICER to meet with the team, to, um, sort of put a human face on, on that ICER and, uh, get to know them, and an opportunity for them to get to know, to know us as we prepare for, um, the next steps. Uh, there will be an open forum immediately following that meet and greet, uh, where the, uh, peer review team will invite members of the community, both the campus community and the public, public at large, to, uh, meet with them and, um, discuss, uh, the state of the college, the ICER, and, uh, NBC's adherence to, um, the standards and other related regulations. Um, then, on February 24th, the peer review team, uh, that has been reading our ICER will formally meet to, um, uh, well, to discuss and, um, uh, issue their findings.
I'm going to take it from there, so the formative, uh, portion of our peer evaluation is based on our ICER and the evidence that was submitted in December, and that evaluation occurs when the team meets on February 24th. Over the two or three weeks following that meeting, the team will finalize the formative feedback that they have for us, and that feedback will be communicated via core inquiries, which we anticipate receiving from the team in mid-March. Uh, the core inquiries are intended to focus the momentum that we have already developed and that will continue into March before we receive the, uh, core inquiries, and even before then, uh, and they will be used to guide and structure the focus site visit. So each core inquiry that is communicated to us will include the following. A summary or identification of the issue requiring clarification, expansion, or further development. Identification of relevant accreditation standards or commission policies associated with the core inquiry. A description of the inquiry, including citation of evidence and any additional information requests that they have. Topic and topics for discussion for the focus site visit. Any standards that are validated by the team during the Team ICER review will not need to be addressed again during the focus site visit. Jim and I will be working with Dr. Frost regarding communication of the core inquiries to the campus community, and that will include the Board of Trustees. Uh, we don't know exactly when we will receive the core inquiries from our peer review team. Uh, given that the next board meeting is scheduled two weeks after the team's review of our ICER, it is possible that we will present them to you at your meeting next month. Uh, and I'll provide one more plug here, a reminder about the training that Dr. Webb will be providing, uh, for us tomorrow at 11:30, and Jim sent out an email about that session, including the Zoom link, earlier today, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
No questions? I, I just want to jump in and thank you.
Jennifer, sorry, Dr. Frost. Oh, Trustee Baker, do you, do you have a question? I see your hand up.
I just wanted to know if the, uh, event on the 23rd was going to be in person or via Zoom?
Yeah, um, so for this semester, everything that the ACCJC is doing and the peer review teams are doing is virtual, and so, uh, yeah, so all of the meetings that will occur, um, both, uh, with the team by themselves and with us, um, will be held via Zoom.
I'm not seeing any other hands up. I, I think, uh, both Robin and, and Dr. McGowan, Jim, you, you two deserve a real thanks from us. This is a, a Herculean effort, and I, I know just as you're getting to this point, you know, there's still more agony to come as all the details come out, and, uh, everything is out there for all to see, but you've brought us to this place, and you've done an excellent job. I'm just, I'm really impressed, uh, with the work that not only you, but that, obviously, the committee and our college community has done to get us to this place, so, uh, I just, I think you deserve to be recognized early because there's, there's some tough parts ahead that we still have to get through, so thank you. Um, from there, I think it's appropriate to move on to an IT update. I see Daniel Vega's here too with, uh, with Oscar, so I'll let you two, uh, deliver that report.
Thank you, Dr. Frost. Thank you very much. Actually, uh, this, this item is also part of, uh, part of my, my report as, as Vice President of Strategic Affairs, but I'll go ahead and just share now. Uh, you may be aware that, that, uh, we continue to offer our, our college community, our, our campus, updates as frequently as possible to let them know, uh, how things are developing. Uh, we're, we're, we're clearly aware that the last couple of weeks we've had some major issues, but, um, thanks to the, to the, to the excellent workmanship of our Key Department, uh, led by Daniel Vega, uh, we have made inroads in, in these issues. Um, we also, uh, part of the issue is that, uh, the, the staffing of the IT area has been, um, I think, um, has, has not been, has not been attended to. And so part of our, our game plan is that we are, we are hiring, uh, one of the positions that, that is vacant, and then one that was held by, by Mr. Sanchez. Uh, the deadline for that position is April the 4th, excuse me, February the 14th. We're also, uh, looking at, uh, the job description for the supervisor of the IT area, uh, and that should be, uh, hopefully that, that should be ready in the next couple of weeks or so, not sooner, but, uh, in addition to that, we're looking at the positions that have been vacant, some for over a year, if not two. And so we, we take our role and our task and our responsibility very seriously, and we're making every possible effort to ensure that you, you here on campus, you, the board members, uh, receive the best IT service that we can. Um, Daniel, would you have anything?
Oh, no, I pretty much said it all. I mean, we're shorthanded, but, you know, we're continuing to move forward and, you know, attack the problems as they show up, and hopefully, you know, get a better experience for our students, you know, and they're our number one item in, in our IT infrastructure, right? So, yeah, it, it's just about paying attention to the outdated stuff to be able to move forward and, and make it work better.
And also I'd like to add, uh, that, that, uh, on February 1st, there was a, a short survey that was launched, uh, with assistance of, of, uh, Dr. Warnall and our staff, uh, to the college community, uh, to, to learn more about who is, who's having difficulty with what particular area of self-service, which, which used to be the focus at this point. So the idea is to collect this information from, from, from on campus and, um, and see what, what, uh, what we learn from it, aside from the fact that some are having difficulties. But again, the idea is to, um, to offer that, that, uh, that assistance, uh, to listen and solicit as much information as we can from our, from our college community, uh, to make improvements as fast as we can. Thank you.
Dr. Parker?
Thanks. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I have provided a written report for you, but I'll just highlight a couple of pieces as I did last month. The first item on my report is the best item on my report. Uh, later this evening, 10 faculty members appear on an HR agenda item as being recommended for a 10-year contract, and I'm very much looking forward to announcing each of their names at that time on the agenda. My written report addresses enrollment. National and state news continues to chronicle the severity of enrollment drops and the long-term implications that this will have on society and the economy. In fall of this year, I shared data with the board on 10-year enrollment trends and some of the things we are going to be doing to refocus our attention and efforts on this topic. Following the flex session on this in January, Dr. Frost announced the creation of a task force, a strategic enrollment management task force. On Tuesday, the Academic Senate appointed five faculty members to participate, and we look forward to forthcoming appointments from classified and administrative senators. Um, our work, though, will not be limited to those only on the task forces. This is a college-wide endeavor, and we will ensure that the work of the task force is open and accessible to everybody who wants to be part of this work. The task force specifically, though, will be, um, focusing on a careful review of enrollment data and community needs. They will be able to provide us with a roadmap that establishes goals for the college and integrates the numerous existing efforts across campus in a coherent way, especially related to outreach and student support and retention efforts, and they will also be able to help us identify clear strategies that we have identified, that we will implement and measure. In the midst of current stressors and challenges at the college that have been referenced tonight as well, a focus on our college's strategic enrollment management on our current and our future students is a way to come together around a common goal, a way to be creative around our shared commitments to the community that we serve, and I am very much looking forward to being part of this collective endeavor. One of the topics I know is of interest to the board are our evening offerings. The charts on my report are a single point of analysis. They compare afternoon, evening, and asynchronous courses from five years ago to this academic year, um, but they are a telling one, right? Those charts starkly illustrate what many of us understand to have occurred over the last five years, and that is that with the rise of online education accelerated during the pandemic, the asynchronous modality of course offerings has replaced a significant number of our afternoon and evening offerings. As a former faculty member who taught at night for many years and is, um, administrator over a program that was designed for working adults at my prior institution, I can attest to some of the reasons this shift has taken place. Asynchronous courses offer a great deal of flexibility to work through the curriculum at times that accommodate busy work schedules and caretaking responsibilities without the need for transportation or lengthy commutes. The pedagogy, technology, and familiarity with taking and teaching asynchronous courses have improved. It's true that there are disciplines for which this modality does not work, uh, but for many other areas, we've seen steady increases in demand for asynchronous course offerings. Part of the work of the task force, as well as ongoing conversations in the Academic Affairs Council within our guided pathways work and with program coordinators and deans, will be to dive into these trends in greater detail. Um, speaking of guided pathways, the finalization of our exploration pathways is a major accomplishment, and I want to appreciate the work of everybody who contributed to getting us here. With these meta-majors determined, we have a framework to reimagine the student experience from pre-NVC through to career or transfer. Some of the elements that colleges who have successfully implemented meta-majors have integrated, uh, into their campuses include things such as wraparound services, first year experience programs, student success coaches, career exploration experiences, expanded internship opportunities, comprehensive pathways, expanded summer bridge offerings, um, and more. So I'm excited about the opportunity to explore the ways that the development and growth of exploration pathways at NBC will help students achieve their academic and professional goals. Um, and then at the very end of, uh, the report, I, uh, will call your attention to three highlights that are truly representative of the work of Academic Affairs because they refer to providing academic support, offering educational and co-curricular learning opportunities, and teaching.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Parker. If I could, I could just ask one question, and one, and thank you for, like, I can tell, I know how passionate you are about enrollment too. I mean, just, I, I, you're, I know you're taking it very personally. I, I, I feel like you are, I, and I, I don't know, I just, I appreciate that a lot because I've, I'm sure a lot of my colleagues who have been getting from, from their constituents, you know, comments, you know, regarding the, uh, article in the Register about enrollment. You, you just mentioned, I think, um, you, you're looking for the, the task force will be kind of looking at interesting data points. I'm just curious what kind of, you know, a couple of data points that, you know, we don't have that you think would be really helpful to know and that you anticipate that the task force will, will narrow in on.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I, I wish I could remember the, the exact name of it off the top of my head, but I was just, uh, looking at it the other day. I don't think Doug Marriott is here. There's a, a labor market study and the, uh, local market assessment report that we will be working on that is part of a submission to the state for our strong workforce funding that we receive annually. That's the kind of data that I think is really helpful to understand how, for example, coming out of the pandemic, the local labor market needs may be shifting. Um, another data point would be from our Flex Day session, we saw that the students... Another data point would be from our flex day session, we saw that the student demographic, our, our average age of students has been declining. So how does the type of programming that we offer or the way that we design our schedule might change given that shift in our particular student population? And what does it say about a particular student demographic that we maybe need to return some of our attention to, which may be our adult learners or individuals who are looking for retraining opportunities?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I'm, I'm looking for hands, but so at this point I'm going to move to.
I see trustee Baldini. I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Frost.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. How did the, the $500 that's on the website, uh, the reaction, the, uh, what's, what's the feedback?
I, you know, it, there has been an improvement in our enrollment since I was here last month. It's small, but I think it's hard to know any one thing that we can attribute that to because there's lots of factors at play here. But I know that another blast about this just went out early this week. Holly can confirm that if she's on the call. And the, I think I shared with you last month that we have a, a quite a fair number of late start classes, which is a area of the schedule that has been increasing proportionally. And that creates a lot of opportunities for students that didn't start at the beginning of the semester, who just now are learning about this $500, um, of financial aid to still be able to sign up for classes and, and not just, you know, the three that we still have open, but a series of classes, some of which will run, for example, the last eight weeks of the semester.
We, this is Holly. We do, we have a late start marketing campaign going right now and we are using that to promote again that $500 opportunity for six plus units and also the opportunity for, um, to use federal aid to pay off student debt.
Great. Thank you both.
And trustee Baldini, I can say that I've asked that same question to, uh, two staff members in student affairs. But the report will probably take until next board meeting for, for us to see the turnaround in and have a good answer for you. So we'll bring that back to the March meeting.
Thank you, sir.
With that, unless there's more, Dr. Parker, I'm going to turn to Oscar DeJaro for your student affairs report.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, this is going to be very short, uh, but, uh, but I wanted to, uh, to, to commend our own Chief Police, Amber Wade, for, for participation, both as a participant as well as a, as a trainer, on a campus police reform task force organized by the chancellor's office and whose, uh, end work will, will be submitted as a report to the board governors. The idea is to reimagine the camp, uh, camp, camp, camp policing and aligning that with the systems of commitment to equity and promoting an inclusive campus climate. So again, uh, Chief Wade was a participant, very active, and again, was a trainer in this. So, so I wanted to offer, uh, my commendation for, for workmanship and for representing Napa Valley College. Uh, the other item is, is one that actually it's, it's, it's a conjunction with, with a controller or a controller, uh, so there is a push and her staff as well as assistance from, from Daniel Vega and the IT folks. In trying to, again, in the spirit of, of, of enhancing the student experience in a positive way, um, we are, uh, we're looking at and we are going to, because it's, it's like a sent, because in calendar for this evening, um, looking at how we can modify the way that students pay their bills at the college. And so to, to that end, uh, we have embarked on a, on a new program that's going to be assisting us with that, but only, not only that, but it also will, uh, put us in compliance with regulations that are in place now with a reference to, uh, to fraudulent, uh, transactions. And the other addition, uh, positive, uh, part of this, this new, um, method or new tool is that it allows students to pay with a, uh, transfer from their bank account as well rather than just with a check, which is not as safe as, as a certain mode. So again, uh, thanks to the, to work and the effort, uh, the business office and the IT department. And if you approve it this, this evening, the students will hopefully be, um, a bit happier with the improvement of services to them. Thank you. And that should do it.
Thank you. And I, and I had just a couple of items to, to report and we'll try to keep the meeting on moving here. And I'll provide a written report to, uh, for the, for the minutes. Um, I, I completed one month on the job, uh, yesterday. It's been, it's been a busy month. And I, there's been a lot of learning, let's put it that way. I, I want to thank both the cabinet, but also the, the executive team and many representatives from the faculty and classifieds just for putting up with all of my questions. Because I, I, and, and of course maintaining, uh, my, my, uh, their confidences too, just in terms of some of the questions I've been able to ask. I've, I've asked some tough questions, uh, because frankly, some of the things I've, uh, you know, like, I tend to turn over rocks too often and, um, there's, there's been a lot of things we found in the last month or two, some surprising things we've found. I think the, the reports tonight from, from all of the constituent groups, from Dr. Tejala, from Bob Harris, from Dixie, from Danielle, you know, all of the reports really showed an orientation towards frustration, being challenged to, to succeed in their work. And, but at the same time wanting some healing to begin and some recovery to begin. And I want everybody to know, especially the board, that having only been here for a month, I feel like I'm only half succeeding at that because frankly, in the pandemic, we really all want to be in the same room. And we're almost to that point. I have been very frustrated seeing how understaffed IT is. And to me, this is a really good example of, you know, when, when administration fails to provide adequate tools for faculty and classified to do their jobs, our students suffer. That really hurts when I see that. And frankly, I, I, I place the responsibility for that right here in this chair. Policies and procedures, you know, what we got in our study session today and what, uh, was, has been discussed in, in, in the reports. You know, the absence of the, of the follow-through necessary to have legally required procedure in place is, is frustrating at best, embarrassing on, on the other hand, but frankly unacceptable for a college. Uh, and, and responsibility for that is right here in the president's chair. It's not in the president's assistant's chair. It's not in the outer office. It's in this office. And I'm very frustrated to see how many people have suffered from that breakdown in decision-making. Uh, the, the inability to move forward with procedure. So I'm, I'm reporting to you what I'm, what I've seen in the past month. But I hope you hear in my voice a commitment to transparency in the months ahead, to the outreach I know this office, the president's office needs to make. I'm so looking forward to Jim Reeves' arrival. Um, I want everybody to know that, and I want to congratulate you, Jim, if you're, if you're online tonight and, uh, look forward to meeting you and working with you. One of the things we're going to start, I've tried to set schedule meetings already with the constituency group presidents. I've been able to meet with one and we are reaching out to, uh, two, excuse me, and I've, and I've been reaching out to the others. But from there, the next step is forums, because there's a lot to discuss as a community, as a learning community. I want everybody to know and I want my board to know that I'm committed to that outreach and that learning process. So we can take what we learned from last year and make sure it contributes to healing, recovery and forward momentum going forward for your permanent president, uh, whenever he or she can get started. So there's, um, there's more I'd like to say about IT investments and how I think that's going to be, uh, some of, some of the technical fix, transparency and how I think that's going to contribute to the, the social wellbeing. And of course, more about budget and those improvements in the months ahead. I really can't comment on that, but I know, I know everybody's wants it and I know everybody's waiting for it. So I just want to vocalize it so people realize I, I get it. And it will be a part of my discussions in the months ahead. I say months ahead because February really won't be, uh, won't be possible. So with that, I conclude my report and I'll provide some written remarks for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Frost. Um, item 11.3, our permanent superintendent president search. Trustee Goff, you know?
Yes, I am here. I'm here. I had my camera off because my internet's being goofy, so I apologize. I, I don't like having my camera off. I, I, I'm uncomfortable with that, but I have to do that tonight. So hopefully you can hear me and it won't go out. So just a, a refresher of, um, what's been happening. The window closed for applications in early January. The committee of 16 members of the Napa Valley College community reviewed applications, a number of applications. Um, we were done with that review on January 19th. Those went to PPL for further review. And we have spent the last three days locked up in our individual rooms, uh, interviewing. We finished up the last interview today. Tomorrow, uh, we will decide which candidates will be referred to the board of trustees for final interviews. Um, the search committee, um, the instructions are to only forward those candidates that you can see and follow as your next president. So, um, I'm excited about, I think we have some good candidates. I'm looking forward to the discussion tomorrow. Once those candidates are chosen by the search committee, um, their names will be forwarded. Forums and board of trustee interviews will take place the 23rd through the 25th. At the end of those interviews on the 25th, the board of trustees will submit the name of the candidate and hopefully we will be able to announce or confirm or vote on it, uh, on our March 10th meeting. It's been a really, um, good experience. It's been a lot of work, uh, but those 16 people in the room have done a fantastic job. Everyone has shown up. Everyone has done the work. And, um, I'm just really happy to be surrounded by a community. I know, uh, tonight's been a little discouraging, but I have to tell you, the search committee is made up of really wonderful people and I know they will put forward candidates that the community can accept and will follow, um, as their next president. So I'm very optimistic about that. Does anybody have any questions about the process or what we've, we've done? I don't see any hands. So that is my report.
Great, trustee Goff. And I did actually want, I know it's just an information item, but just to give the opportunity for the, a public to make any comment if any of our, uh, members of the public that are watching this would like to ask any questions or, or make any comments, this is the opportunity to do so. Catherine, do, do you see anybody's hand up?
No, I do not. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Of course.
No, it's a lot.
My pleasure.
And, okay, um, 11.4, which, uh, is an action item. Board goals. I think we had a very thorough and comprehensive discussion, uh, at our, at our last meeting and we decided to add, uh, two, two new policies, um, and, and walk those out, um, including five and, and six. Just wanted to see, I, I think personally that they, they look, uh, in, in great shape and, and provide a nice pathway for the president's office to, to, um, you know, look towards and, and, and meeting their own goals. But does any trustees have a comment? If not, I'd, I'd welcome a motion to approve our board, board goals.
I will, uh, move for approval for our board goal.
Trustee Baldini, do you want to, should we take the motion or is this a question or?
I'll, uh, take the motion. I'll second it. And then I have a question on item five.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Iverson, uh, move for approval and Baldini second. Go ahead, trustee Baldini.
It's just, uh, item five, uh, integrating diversity, equity and inclusion and accessibility into its policies, procedures. Should we add actions to that policies, procedures and actions? That we, we consider it in what we do, how we act?
I would appreciate that change. I don't think it's.
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, I, 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 I would support that. Trustee Iverson, would you, uh, amend your motion?
I will amend my, uh, motion.
Could you, before that happens, could you kind of read it to me? What, what's, how's it going to read now?
Michael, I guess why don't you do it since you, uh, provided that direction and then trustee Baker, I see, I see your hand up. So I trust you, Baldini, can you, can you read it out?
Before you do that, actually, Michael, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to add a word as well. So I, I am, because to say we want to integrate diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility, that doesn't make sense to me. Is it, to me, it was like, we're saying we want to integrate, we want to integrate the values of diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility into policies and procedures and actions. Does that make more sense?
Can you say that one more time again?
Is I, I just, just to say, to, to integrate or inclusion, I don't know. I, it just, it just.
It's kind of a passive, passive test.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It, it's, as long as, as long as our intent is clear, I suppose it's fine.
Well, I think you had it right though. I.
The values.
I think you were right.
Equity, inclusion and accessibility into policies and policies, procedures and actions.
Can we go actions, policies and procedures? I'm just.
Sure.
Sorry, that was terrible joke. Um, yeah, I, I'd like to say, any other, uh, comments on that? Uh, trustee Deluna, I know this was, uh, one of your suggested policies.
Yeah. And I just, I think, um, I'm okay with it because we had talked about renewing these soon. So this is just 2021, 2022. Um, we're not renewing them, but reviewing them once we have our new president.
Yeah.
The possibility of it. So I'm, I'm okay with it for now.
Great. Thank you.
With the changes, yeah.
Great.
Were those changes decided?
Is there any other further discussion on it, trustee Rios?
No, I'm just still wondering whether we actually got the change.
Uh, we have a motion on the table to add the values of diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility into its actions and policies and procedures. That's the motion to adopt the goals, adding the values and actions.
I will amend my motion with the, um, said changes.
Can I support that, uh, as a second? Baldini?
Okay. Oh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll, uh, call for a vote. Uh, student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson? I hear you. I've got, I, I need. Yeah, no, that's fine. And I'll, I'll vote aye as well. And, and, and thank you, thanks to, uh, trustee Iverson and trustee, uh, Deluna and trustee Baldini for, you know, being the subcommittee to, to put these goals and revise them further. And Catherine, thank you for, for your efforts too on this and, and Dr. Frost to you as well. Uh, we'll move to the consent calendar. Item 13.1, any changes to the consent?
Excuse me, trustee, uh, Dodd, we have 11.5, the resolution on Black History Month.
Well, that is omitted from my, my little note sheet here, and that was not intentional at all. Excuse me. Thank you for calling that out. You know, I actually wanted to, if we could bring over, um, Dr. Musami, to maybe just introduce this, if you could, Catherine, I'm sorry, I know I didn't ask this early, but if you could move her over just quickly as a panelist, because I thought, you know, we don't need to re, re, read all the, the recitals, uh, which I, but I thought were just incredibly thoughtful and, and thorough. But I know she put a lot of time into this and I thought it'd be nice to have her, uh, intro, introduce it and then we can, we can take a, take a vote.
I believe she is, um.
She is, I do see.
I was here. I was here. Thank you very much. Um, Dear Board of Trustees, President Frost, colleagues, students and members of the Napa Valley community. I am honored to bring before the Board of Trustees a resolution to recognize February as Black History Month. African-Americans have made enormous sacrifices in the development of our nation through their labor, intellectual innovations, leadership in political governance and social transformation, cultural contributions and their incalculable contribution to the economy.
cultural contributions, and their incalculable contribution to the economy of the United States. Black History Month is an opportunity for reflection and celebration of these contributions and to recognize the history of transatlantic slavery, abolitionist efforts, the oppression of Jim Crow politics, the civil rights movement, and contemporary movements for social justice spearheaded by African Americans, but supported by Americans and global citizens from all walks of life. I'd like to recognize the members of the Black History Month Planning Committee led by Jeanette McClendon and Dr. Alex Guerrero, and the tireless work of Jacenia Cota and Jennifer Aguilar. I encourage the campus to attend Black History Month events and lectures, to see the wonderful displays in the library, and to take advantage of the Black History Month Zoom backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pamela Warmer-Musami. I appreciate that. And so you did have a good team working with you, putting this together.
I did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And well, I would welcome a motion to approve the resolution. I see, I'll recognize trustee Deluna's motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Baker, thank you. We'll call for a vote. Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
I will vote aye as well.
And Dr. Moon Sami, I just wanted to ask real quick. Congratulations again on this. This is beautiful. But can you send us the background, the Zoom backgrounds, or send them to me?
Oh, yeah.
Love that. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Happy to do that. Thank you.
I have a quick question to Dr. Moon Sami.
Yes.
In the past, we had had speakers, and that was when we were doing more in the Performing Arts Center. But if I've missed them, did we have much this month in terms of speakers or guests to the campus?
So we have had two speakers so far. One was on the second, and the next speaker, I believe, was yesterday. And we are going to have additional activities on the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion website. There's a calendar, and we're going to have an even fuller calendar posted in the next few days as we finalize other events for the month. So please visit that website for information about future events. Thank you. And we look forward to being able to provide a more robust series of activities next year, when hopefully we'll all be back on campus and we'll have had more time for advanced planning to get things in place. Thank you for asking.
Thank you very much. Item 13, Consent Calendar. Would welcome a motion to approve the consent.
Move to approve.
Trustee Rios, thank you.
Baldini, second.
Call for a vote. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson? I'll vote aye as well. Information or administrative services information. Item 14.1, 2122 unrestricted general fund 11, operating fund, revenues and expenditures, update and adjusted budget. We have Doug Roberts with us.
Yes, you do.
Bless your heart, Doug. Bless your heart.
Um, okay, view. Can you all hear me at least?
Yes.
Okay, that's half the problem. I don't have the video. Sorry for the background, but just a reminder that I'm retired. Well, well, first of all, come on, thank. First of all, thank you all for 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 allowing me to to come and talk to you today. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the screen up. And it's it's not letting me. Okay, this is.
Catherine, can scroll? Can you see our screen, Doug? The the screen share?
Barely. That is my problem. I was, I was, I was working on some other stuff for you guys. But I will go with that, and and I will just just go with what I have, because I do have a skinny, a printout in front of me. And I see that the, based upon the coloration, I can see on the screen. I'm looking at the very first page. This presentation is very similar to what you all have seen in the past in that I have taken the expenditures as of January 31st and have compared that to the expenditures of the previous year. That is what is in the gold columns. As you can see, the expenditures are fairly close to one another. The columns to the left show the audited numbers for both 2019 and 2020 and 2020, 21. The columns to the right of the gold column show the final budget that was adopted by the board. The adjusted budget that the board adopted as of December 1st. And then there are the projections to date as of January 31st, 2022. And the far right-hand column is a comparison between the projection for 2122 and what was approved by the board as an adjusted budget as of December 1st, 21. Now, you'll note that there is not a difference with regards to the revenues. And as I've mentioned before, I have done an exhaustive look into the calculations for our revenues, and those revenues are very solid, in my opinion. Because we do not have a oh, God. A, a, excuse me, the, the position control budget. You know, I've had to rely upon a workaround procedure with regards to our salaries and benefits. And so you will see a variance between the projections I have for the fiscal year and what what was projected as of December 1st. And and most notably, you'll see that there's, there's a projected expenditure of salaries of about $185,000 more than what we had in the in the December 1st budget. The largest component of that I want to point out is is for the temporary faculty salaries. Because these numbers are based upon January 31st, and we have not had the initial impacts of whatever reductions have happened to the schedule, and we know that there have been reductions to the schedule for spring. Those numbers are not quite reflective of that. I fully expect when this calculation is done for the board again at the end of February, you will see better alignment with the numbers that you had approved back in December. Employee benefits, of course, there's a direct correlation between employee benefit expenditures and the salary expenditures. We are seeing a little bit of an uptick in the cost for health and welfare benefits. We are looking, looking into that. It may require a bit of a adjustment on the part of the district. Let's get to page two. Thank you. As we're looking at at the expenditure for books, supplies, and other operating expenditures, we are seeing an uptick in the other operating expenditures. I think it doesn't come as as any surprise to a lot of folks that we are seeing an increase in utilities expenditures. Anyone who's, you know, been watching the the price of gas and electricity knows that there's some uptick. But again, most of these projections are a bit affected with regards to the when some of the bills get paid. Normally, there's a little bit of divergence with regards to does the bill get paid in December? Does the bill get paid in January as to when we receive some of that stuff? I expect a little more, you know, evening out and and closer relationship to what the adjusted budget had been that the board had 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 approved. But bottom line, and you can scroll down a little bit. What we are currently projecting is a deficit budget of about $280,000, which is a change of almost $390,000 to what was presented as of the December 1st budget. I am expecting to see some changes, reductions in that amount. But when you look at at the entire budget and the change that is being shown, and it looks like a lot of dollars. You know, keep in mind that this is less than a 1% deflection of what we had originally, you know, approved as an adjusted budget. It's not where I would like things to be. It is a little. Is it unnatural to see this kind of deflection? Again, it really depends on when some of our bills get paid, and it doesn't reflect some of the decreases we know are going to be happening in spring. Nor does any of this show any of the effect of the SERP that is, you know, currently being looked at, nor any of the other reductions that are also being looked at for the year. But this does give you a sense of where we're headed and the fact that we do have some issues and that that some conservative spending on the part of the district is probably well called for at this point. And if you recall from last month, the projections that I had with regards to 2223, which showed about a million dollars short. If you are to believe the the numbers that are here. And and again, I do think these are going to going to be reduced for this year. But still, the projection for next year would not indicate that we're going to see a large reduction in those numbers. And that was a $1.1 million deficit spending and not to pile on. But the ACCJC does not include or does not feel that any of the one-time funding that we receive in revenues. And Catherine, if you'll jump back up to the first page, you will see under revenues that that we are showing about $1.6 million in one-time funding or other local income. And ACCJC does not feel that that is ongoing. So in the viewpoint of ACCJC, as we're looking towards 2223, that is almost a $2.5 million issue. And I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Frost has a question.
What can, can Doug, can you just elaborate on that $2.5 million issue such that we can all understand it fully? Certainly. Myself included? And Dr. Frost, first of all, you know, I do not want to miss the opportunity to say publicly that, you know, although our time together has been short, I have appreciated it. And and you certainly do grasp, you know, the the situation. The reason I talk about a $2.5 million issue is that, as you'll recall from from the projection that I gave you for 2223 last, last board meeting, was that we were looking, you know, unless things changed, we were looking at a deficit of about $1.1 million. Okay. ACCJC does not consider any amounts that are quote unquote transfers in from other funds to be ongoing revenues. And to them, the golden standard is that your ongoing expenditures will be kept within your ongoing revenues. So we are projecting for 2223 that we already have a $1.1 million deficit budget. But included in that is about $1.4 million of one of, excuse me, of interfund transfers that ACCJC does not consider to be ongoing money. So you add the 1.1 million that we're already projecting to this transfer money that they believe is not ongoing. To them, that is a $2.5 million problem. And I did see in in the board's goals that one of the things that you're trying to to deal with is meeting the expectations of ACCJC. And if that is truly what you're about about to do over the next few months, that is really the size of the issue that you have. Then I appreciate the clarification because, you know, a lot of my, you know, just most basic back and forth with trustees is to make sure we we understand that, you know, it's not so much the gravity of the problem. It's it's what I have to address while I'm here. And so that's why I'm being so deliberate with this, with this question. I want to make, this is, this is a board member's time, though, so I want to allow them time for questions.
I saw trustee Rios's hand up.
Yeah, I, I, about that other income. So because the ACCJC does not consider that to be, I forget how you phrased it.
Ongoing.
Ongoing. Does that mean that we won't get it? Is ACCJC in control of that?
No, trustee Rios, no, and that's a great question. Currently, we are, and there's a lot of detail involved in this. But currently, we are receiving about 1.1 to 1.2 million in lost revenue compensation from from some, from the available HERF funding. That was available to us this year. It will be available to us next year. Well, as as long as we applied for the 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 extension, and I'm sure we're doing that, but but I've been gone for a week or so. But we'll get that money next year. So that was part of the planning for 2223. But ACCJC takes a longer view at the district's finances, and they see that funding going away after 2223. But then, but just as as kind of a what's the word, a rule of thumb, they look at anything that is an interfund transfer as just one-time money when they are doing their review of our finances. I hope that answered it, but I'm willing to talk more.
No, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Can I dig a little deeper on that one? Just like, what is an example of the other local, what what is? What what is an example of these?
Well, when we're looking at at the transfers in, as as many of you, you know, oh, God, I'm I'm losing my voice. Can can you just give me a couple of sentences? Get get something drink?
Absolutely. Hey, Kyle, I was gonna just just go, you know, jumping to the ocean. I was actually going to ask a similar thing. You know, you're talking about, I wonder if in terms of getting that 2.5 million debt number down lower. I mean, is curious to know if there's any sort of one-time operating expenses, such as, I'm just looking at, Doug, I was just kind of piggybacking off of trustee Iverson's in in terms of you know, one-time operation. And I think we've got something on our on our agenda tonight. Upgrading and replacing the HVAC system at the lower in terms of building a ton. That's a that's a one-time finance from from the government to deal with HVAC issues.
Yeah, and and to get to the HVAC thing, I don't have to say layout, but I have talked extensively to to Matt. And most of that is is some of the deferred maintenance expenditure, which is out of our capital projects fund, which is Fund 41. And we are actually going to be able to use some of the COVID money, the HERF money, you know, for some of that upgrade. But it really doesn't affect our Fund 11 expenditures.
Okay.
That's capital projects. But to get back to to Kyle's question, within the transfers in, we do have an annual amount. It varies a little bit between 175 and $200,000 that that we get from DAS, you know, our auxiliary services. And we also get some additional money through some some of the funding that we get from the Bell and Betty Rhodes support of the culinary services. It's part of some of our foundation money that comes to the district. So but because it it's coming to to the Fund 11 from one of our other funds, we treat that as a transfer in. Unfortunately, given the accounting that we have based upon the the Budget and Accounting Manual from the State Chancellor's Office, we're kind of relegated as to how we account for this. It's unfortunate that ACCJC views it in the way that they do. But when you're looking at the overall amounts, we're not the HERF money, you know, the COVID HERF money is is the largest portion. And to to you know, give them credit for their thought process. They know that that money is going away. And the question is, can we, in the future, make it on our own resources without some of this special funding? And they look at all transfers in as special funded, whether or not it's it's an annual thing to us or not. Now, I I wish they had had some additional ways to account for that for that kind of funding. But unfortunately, they don't. You know, they they kind of do a one-size-fits-all. Which, as anybody knows, one-size-fits-all really doesn't work for everyone, especially for a district that is a community-supported slash basis-gated district. Sorry, I was losing my voice there.
And I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay.
You mentioned Fund 11 and Fund 12 comes into my mind, too. Are there are there areas that we could look at in Fund 11, Fund 12 that could help this situation?
Oh, yeah, definitely. You know.
What would an example be, Doug, just to like throw it out there?
Well, we have a lot of categorical programs that include in the program the funding of the management of those programs. And there are some instances where the people who are managing those programs are currently being funded from Fund 11, not Fund 12. That's really just a a case of looking at at some of these instances. And I understand that that it's it's you know, for the folks who are involved in those programs, they really do want to maximize the resources available to to serve those students who are being served by those programs. And so to the extent that Fund 11 can pay for some of that management, that means more money is available to serve those students. But unfortunately, in the situation that we are currently in, that's a certain amount of largess that the district cannot afford. And so if people are doing work for categorical programs, it's I I it would it would behoove the district for those individuals to be funded by those categorical programs and not the operations fund that is utilized for the rest of the district.
We're going to try and tease this one out, but do we have an idea roughly of what that savings could be?
Oh, boy. It 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 could be in the neighborhood of about 400 to 500,000. You know, once once we get through all of it. But it's it it takes a lot of of research to find some of this stuff. I think I've mentioned to to the board once before that one of the one of the issues that I have found, you know, when I came on board, is we've used account codes of convenience. Instead of instead of of creating the account codes to help us account for things in a method that would help us comply with the 50% law and or you know, for Fund 11, we've we find account codes that are already existent. And then the idea was that year end, we'd make the change. Well, in some cases, we get to year end and we don't find, you know, we don't find those accounts to make the changes. And again, for 1920 and 2021, there was a Herculean effort made by all of the VPs, you know, talking with all their deans and all their staff to help us identify, you know, what reclassifications we had to make. It was a lot of work over a very short period of time. And thankfully, you know, we did make a lot of corrections. But we got a lot of the big stuff. There is still some of the medium and small stuff that we just need to fix. And it's an ongoing it's an ongoing task. But I think we're closer than where we were. But that doesn't mean we are where we need to be.
Thank you. That helps a lot. I know these are complicated issues and there's lots of moving parts. And I know from my position on the board, and I can't speak for everyone else, but this is this is a a team effort. This district is a family and we will figure this out. We will balance the budget. We'll do it together, and it's going to be done through hard decisions and turning over stones and figuring out what we can do to to make it better.
Well, as I like to tell people, I I've got I've got a degree in geology. So turning over stones is something I'm used to. But I will say this. We have a lot of good people in the district. And I think everyone has has is is willing to pitch in. Now that we have a better idea of where we are, I think NBC can see the direction it has to go. It's not going to be easy. But I I think there's some consensus as to we know where we've got to go, and I think most people are behind it.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions or comments?
Well, the only comment I would make, and Doug, I would invite your additional input. My impression, when I met Doug second, second or third, I don't know, maybe it was my first day on the job. This was one of the specific things I started asking about. Because Oscar and I had talked about it even in my orientation the week before, that there were multiple things we needed to do to start solving this budget shortfall. And Doug spent a lot of his time uncovering what he could. It is complex. You don't you don't get it overnight. So as much as you, the board, want want answers on the shortfall in the short term, I I really appreciate Doug's outlining how it's a process. And we're engaged in it. And it's Oscar and I spent time on on his budgets and and going through a lot of questions of what we could change. I've done the same with Dr. Parker. So all the vice presidents, Charo especially, of course, circling back. So I I appreciate the what you shared with the board because it gives them a sense of here's here's the key point. It really gives them a sense of how poorly the job was done in 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 the previous couple of years. And I that's from that's my comment to make, by the way. That's not anybody else's. But in my view, Doug uncovered a lot of inadequacies, frankly, in in the work of that office in prior years. So I I won't ask you to comment on that, Doug, but I wanted to make that one mine.
Well, if 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 I'm allowed to, first of all, I I I I kind of like to make the joke that, well, the reason I don't know why, what went on was because when I got to my office, Solange had cleared out everything. It's just a joke. Okay, I have told her to leave all of my files, all of my binders for Jim Reeves. And on Wednesday, I'm going to be going over a lot of this stuff. So he at least will start with a better idea of where things went awry than when I got here. But I I and 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 I was, you know, adamant. And and not that I'm trying to to shade or trying to steer anything in any particular direction. But I think where the district got off, you know, began to go awry was that timely, accurate fiscal information was not provided to the district. It was not there, you know, to to develop budgets. And because of that, after a while, y'all were flying blind. You know, I I can't specifically blame anyone because I don't know what went into it all. All I know is that the way I would have done the job is certainly different than than the way the job had been done, of course. You know, I I I, you know, I'm I'm something of of a numbers geek. I, you know, I I do all these kind of spreadsheets and projections because I want to be the most accurate that is possible. One of the things that's been different for you all this year is instead of just getting a budget, I've given you a budget with comparatives. We did an adjusted budget. I'm giving you projections, which I think is more information than you've had in a number of years. But it's the minimum amount of information that you should be getting on a monthly basis. Because it's only based upon the accuracy of this kind of information for you to make these kind of decisions. And you are going and you are already in the process of making some very difficult decisions. And it's not because of what any one person has done in any one particular year, but it has been an accumulation. And unfortunately, based on on what the facts are. You know, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it. It is, you know, we we have been not meeting all of the legal requirements for the 50% law. We are well, we are upside down in in the numerator, denominator, in that our non-classroom salary expenditures are greater than our classroom salary expenditures. And that's and that's not just administrators, but that includes classified and that includes non-instructional faculty. And I know these are are not things that folks want to want necessarily here. But when you just look at the numbers from 17 or 1617, you can see where there were some large increases in the non-classroom salaries. And that is why we have the problem with with the 50% law. And quite frankly, also with our Fund 11. And that's, I'm probably saying more than I should, but well, that's the advantage of of being a civilian. Just kidding.
We're learning. We're learning, Doug. I I appreciate it. I know the board does, too.
And a lot of it, Doug, it sounds like was a lack of good practices and procedures, too, right? In terms of budgeting from the different areas?
I think there was there were decisions made that did not have the kind of fiscal analysis and projection that should have been done. I I think they were what's the right word? They were great ideas. But where was the fiscal reality? And that's how I see it.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much. Hopefully, you can get a throat lunge or something.
No, I'm I'm sorry. Of course, if this is bad, I feel sorry for Jim Reeves on the 16th when I have lunch with him.
Thank you again, Doug. Take care.
That's all right.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, y'all. I'm here to help whenever I can.
Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Moving on to an action item 14.2, Peterson Mechanical Contract to Upgrade and Replace HVAC Systems in Lower Floor Building 1800. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this?
Baldini move approval.
Sorry, I have received none.
Thank you. Baldini with a a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Trustee Rios with the second. Any discussion? I see trustee Baker.
I was just wondering which which building that is, if
It's the Mesa STEM.
It's it's the chemistry, biology, physics, science labs.
Okay, the one that's the one that's behind the the where the outdoor graduations and stuff?
Behind the Grove, yeah. Yeah, and I've I've talked with with Bob VanderWeld and Matt, and it all makes good sense. I mean, I'm I'm comfortable recommending it.
I'll call for a vote. If there's any other any other hands up? Team none, I'll call for a vote. A student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson? Although I as well. Another action item, contract approving a Lucian Cloud Migration Consultant Services. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, I have received none on this.
Seeing no hands up in our attendees.
Yeah.
I would welcome a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Thank you, trustee Iverson.
A second?
A second from trustee Goff. I'll call for a a vote. A student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker? Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Although aye as well. Actually, this is a 15.1. This is also an action item, Human Resources Information Academic Personnel Status Document. Dr. Parker, I know you're happy to give us a report on this item.
Yes, I am. So on behalf of Dr. Frost, Cabinet, and the deans, I want to offer my congratulations to all of the individuals who are listed here for achieving this milestone. One, and specifically, I'm speaking to the faculty members who have been put forward for a tenure contract. And they're noted on the document there with, I think it's a square next to their name. So this milestone acknowledges your disciplinary expertise, your gift to teaching, your many campus service contributions, and honors and protects academic freedom. I'd like to thank the work of the faculty peer evaluation teams who provided guidance, mentorship, and friendship to you over the last three and a half years. And we all feel so fortunate that you're part of our community. We will be celebrating you more concertedly next fall, as is the tradition here at NBC. But I wanted to read out each of the names of these individuals tonight in recognition.
Please do.
Okay, great. So first is Jennifer Aguayo, Professor of Math. Dr. Seth Anderson, Professor of History. Dr. Rachel Crechy, Professor of Human Services and Addiction Studies. John Kinchlow, Professor of English. Dr. Matt Krosner, Professor of English. Carrie Powell, Professor of Child and Family Studies and Education. Giselle Robinson Pega, Professor of Psychiatric Therapy. Carrie Roughley, Professor of Geology. Emery Stafford, Professor of Math. Terry Wagner, Professor of Accounting. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And this is an action item to approve this item.
Move approval.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second, Enos.
Thank you, trustee Deluna. Any discussion? And I should also offer, excuse me, any public comment, Catherine?
I'm sorry. No, I have received none, and I see no hands raised. Oh, there was a hand. Hold on.
Great. I see it's Dr. DeHada.
Got to find her. Here we go.
I just want to congratulate my colleagues. It is a pleasure to have them as members of the faculty and the academic senate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeHada. I'll call out for the vote. A student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And I will go aye as well. Congratulations, everybody. We are at item 18.1, Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. Do you have anything for...
Trustee Dodd, you're at 17.1.
Oh, thank you.
I'm reading the board policy 40.
Another thing I deleted. Man, I've just got loose fingers here. Thank you. And let me just pull up my Word document then. So I think we have, I think, a very helpful, albeit a short presentation from Eileen O'Hara Anderson. But I think we got some really helpful direction, I think, in terms of looking at this particular policy and then also looking at future policies. And maybe we can go over future policies and agenda items since this might be a little inappropriate to discuss that. And that would be a more appropriate discussion for future agenda items. But what I would like to do is, in light of Eileen O'Hara Anderson's guidance, is that we look at this with her input and based on the templates that she suggested that we review and table this for that, but with the goal to bring this back to the board for a second reading and approve, you know, a revised one with those templates in mind that we can compare and contrast for the board's approval.
I like that idea, and I will move for approval of tabling it and bringing it back after a little more review.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'd like to just give an opportunity for any public comment. Seeing none, and Catherine, I'm...
No, I have not received.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure. We just got to do it right, do it the right way.
I was typing the new motion.
Always multitasking. So we have a motion. I'll call for the vote. A student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Although aye as well. Now, item 18.1, Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. DOS, Michael?
Anything to report? Yes, thank you. I know our next meeting is March 22 at this point.
Thank you. VWT?
Yes, we did have a meeting on the 2nd of February. The, a couple of things. One, thank you, Holly, for the publication and press releases on Mr. Doug Schaefer joining the board. We did hear a report from our winery operations manager. This has been in the pipeline for years onsite. We actually talked about wine pricing increases, wine clubs, label design, so on and so forth, whatever, the budget, fine tuning the inventory, so on and so forth. But it looks good, and we have wine for sale. Still out in the marketplace with Whole Foods, so promote our program by buying a bottle or come down and buy some as well. So we also discussed the Evelyn Ellen that was presented by senior dean Marriott. And that's exciting, and I thank the foundation, particularly Jessica Thompson's efforts in that regard. And we did discuss, wow, why don't we just move the whole program out there? Anyway, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Nothing to report from Audit and Finance. I don't believe there's anything to report out from Real Property Committee either. But I do know, Catherine, that we are planning to do a meeting, I think, in the near future for Real Property?
We are, and actually, I don't know where we are in setting the date. We wanted early, late February, early March. But now with these special meetings, I'm thinking it might be early March.
Okay, and what was the topic, just so the board knows, I think, in terms of discussion there?
I believe it's going to be an update on Mount Veder property.
Okay, and something I'd like to maybe add on that, and I don't know if our new vice president will be able to, you know, really get on top of the all issues. But I've had some real thoughtful discussion with trustee Rios about, you know, a real kind of review of our facilities master plan. And having our Real Property Committee just get us, I mean, it's a very deep and extensive document, but just to kind of take a look at it, see where we're at, and kind of evaluate where we need to go, since I think it's about eight years old, give or take a year. And I think ideally putting together a timeline over the next year to update that master plan, which I know is going to be a significant effort as well. But I just don't think we at least get a better sense of where we're at with the document itself.
Trustee Dodd, I see that the meeting has been scheduled for February 28. And so we will talk about the topics.
Talk about all the things. I know, I'm struggling to get out the words right now, too. Mick Fearsen, Distinguished Teaching Award Selection Committee.
That is me. Come back on here. We did meet under the fabulous guidance of Dr. Parker. We had our initial meeting. We've looked at all of the application and the score sheets and all of that. Dr. Parker, you and your wonderful staff are working on this. Would you like to kind of let everybody know where we're at? Because I know it's coming, and there's great excitement around it.
Thank you. You mostly covered everything. It was a great first meeting. I'm really excited about the committee this year. And we will, I'm going to get the finalized documents out to the committee for our last review, and then they'll be going out to campus. I think the date is just over two weeks from now. And the nominations will be out and be available for five weeks.
So make sure you get those applications in. And we know we have lots of wonderful staff that we'd love to see nominated this year.
Thank you, trustee Goff. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Dr. Schenk Award, trustee Deluna?
Nothing has been set yet.
Great, but soon. College Foundation, Kyle?
Yeah, there's a lot of exciting things happening, which is nice despite some of the stuff that we've had this evening. But I'm not going to spoil it or take Jessica's thunder, so I will let her report next month.
Thank you, trustee Iverson. We'll be on the edge of our seats. Accreditation Steering Committee, trustee Deluna?
Well, we have a training tomorrow and upcoming meetings for everybody. And yeah, I have nothing to add besides what Robin and...
Yeah, we had a nice report earlier. Yep. Catherine, can we open up future agenda item requests, please? So we have a lot here. Dr. Frost, I don't know. Maybe you could kind of provide some direction here on what you think is reasonable in terms of what we heard tonight from Eileen O'Hara Anderson in terms of board policies, BPs and Ap's. And I think a timeline and how we move, especially, I think, those items that she identified as, you know, that these are just legally, need to do these things absolutely on an emergency basis, have to do this as soon as possible in terms of complying with accreditation standards.
You want me to think out loud? Is that what I want?
No, excuse me. Well, I think, just to get your thought in terms of, maybe you can avoid the micro and go macro. This is, I think, something that I heard from the board, and, you know, maybe we need to get some consensus on this. But it was clear to me that Eileen gave us pretty strong direction in terms of what we need to do with respect to our BPs and Ap's.
Yeah, there is a lot to do. We can do it. You know, me thinking out loud about how to do it is going to trample on some tradition. There's a pretty significant number of procedures that are not, you know, a part of the 10 plus one or the mutual agreement process that do require consultation. All of the procedures, really, we utilize consultation. What I find interesting at NBC here is it doesn't get put into place until, you know, the consultation sometimes sits for a very, very long time. And so there's where, to me, the way to catch up is for the president's office to commit in writing to an ongoing consultation process so that no one doubts that there's always an ability to review and consider amendments, adjustments, reconsideration of a procedure once posted. The other thing is, we need a four-year or a five-year review cycle so that everybody understands that this is not put in concrete and never going to be looked at again, that it will come up for review and consideration in a regular cycle. And that's part of the, you know, any institution's, you know, continuous improvement and evaluation process. So what I, based on the board's goal within that ACCJC goal, there was an element there having to do with policy and procedure. I'm going to work with the vice presidents. Everyone's going to get their assigned chapter. We'll have updated draft. I will base my work on the templates because those are legally vetted. And we'll set assigned times for review, and we'll send them out, and we'll get them back, and we'll work with the constituency group presidents. But we'll follow through. Because I think one of the key things that didn't happen in the past was the follow-through. And I can at least take responsibility for that and follow through in my time here. As I'll just conclude by saying, the one thing I committed to the board was I want to help the permanent president get off to a good start with, you know, the office in sound shape. And coming into the middle of something like this, in the middle of an evaluation year, is not something I would want to walk into. So there's my quick thinking as far as the work ahead. And I'll be sure and share updates to the board on that as well as we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Goff.
But I anticipate those 10 policies coming to the board for a first reading in your next meeting. And I have to look at them, so I may be wrong. There may be lack of consultation. But those policies are the board's purview. So the board does have ability to review those, even if they are being reviewed by a constituency group. So I want to make sure the board's not remiss in what is their purview. Procedure, that's something that I will take on and advance through the president's office.
Thank you. You know, I would really, I know we're kind of getting to the end of the meeting, so I don't want to go too late here, but I'd appreciate some input. The way it seemed to me is Eileen had put together, she put together an Excel sheet and highlighted those items that I think were legally required. For me, I think that's just kind of what we need to just examine right away. It just seems the most logical to me, especially in the midst of accreditation. And just get a sense of what items have, you know, gone through legal consultation and what items require mutual agreement. And just to get an overall sense, it'd be nice to review that. And to the extent we can bring in as many policies as possible before the board at next month's meeting, I think that's what we need to do. It's a legally required mandate according to our council. So if any other trustees want to offer their input, I would appreciate it.
I agree with that, and I think we should look to, or I think Dr. Frost said this, but even if there are some that say we really need to adopt that are urgent, that we do commit to come back, and if they haven't been looked at through the consultation process, that we commit to doing that on some timeline so that, you know, the constituencies are assured that they're going to have their input into it. And, you know, we may need to revise and, you know, come back and revise. But I think it's extremely important we get these things in place.
I agree with that. I think this is ridiculous. It hasn't been done. So I'd like to move forward and get this one off the list.
Thank you for your candor. Trustee Goff?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to add? I'll just hopefully leave it there. Thank you, guys.
I think the one thing I want to add, just for the board's security, you know, so you don't worry about this. One of the things to me that was really lacking was transparency. So people will be frustrated by the pace of change. This is, when you have 107 procedures that have not even been posted because they never completed the review process, getting that done is going to require some quick work. What I'm going to commit to, and thank you, Rafael, for reminding me of this. You know, the president has to be willing to commit to a continuous review process transparently, in writing, and even documented on the procedure. So there's no doubt that there's a willingness to review improvements, revisions, and take the expertise of our faculty and our staff and our students as ongoing expertise that contributes to the betterment of the college. So I think that's something we need to vocalize time and time again to begin to rebuild some faith and some trust as was described in some of the reports earlier today. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item 18.3, trustee and Board Tier Reports. Trustee Deluna?
No report.
You can go first. I can go back to you if you want. You were unmuted, so I just thought we'll go.
Oh, no, I don't know why I did that, but I'm not ready.
Oh, no, I don't know why I did that, but I'm not ready. I don't really have much to report. This has been a busy, a busy time. The conference was great. It was great to be able to meet with everybody and just in a personal way, actually be together. And then also meet so many people at the conference. I did not meet not one person from Northern California. Everybody was from Southern California, which is not a bad thing. But this was my first time, and that was surprising to me. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Goff?
Yes, my other report is to once again thank all of the members of the search committee for all your efforts. It's been a lot of work, but everybody has shown up and done a really terrific job, and I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to our discussion tomorrow and for forwarding those names. But I do want to commend those who have participated. I truly appreciate their input. Thank you.
Here, here. Trustee Rios?
Yes, just briefly, I kind of want to follow up on Beth's comments there. Having, we're not quite done, but having been a part of the search committee, it has been a lot of work. It has given me a whole different perspective and understanding of how hard, you know, the faculty and the classified and all the other constituencies, just how hard they work and how deeply committed they are. It's just, you know, I haven't participated really in anything like this the whole time that I've been on the board. I was on, you know, the interview committee for our former president, but it wasn't the same, it wasn't the same as what we're doing right now. So that has been very helpful to me just to understand how hard everybody works and how committed they are. And we've got one more day tomorrow, so I look forward to that. And I just want to thank everybody. So thank you, that's it.
Thank you for sharing that. Trustee Baldini?
I just wanted to say thank you, trustee Goff, and thank you, trustee Rios, for doing what you do and your very nice remarks. Thank you.
Trustee Baker's in there, too.
What's that?
Trustee Baker, yes. Probably got a nasty round.
Student trustee, Soto Gonzalez?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, express my thanks to everyone who gave me the chance to be on the search committee, because, you know, that's something different that I haven't done like at all through my whole school life and career here at Temple Valley College. So, you know, it was very interesting to, and I learned a lot from it. And yeah, I'm just excited for tomorrow.
Cool. Trustee Baker?
Gracious, well, yeah, between all of the search committee stuff and new job and city council meetings and board meetings and this, I think, I feel like I've been sitting in this chair for a year. But it has been just, you know, although I'm happy that we're coming to a close, I'm also kind of miss it because I've really gotten, I've really enjoyed getting to know so many different groups and individuals that represent our college community. And I'm feeling very confident that we're going to find somebody, we're all going to agree that will, who will be a really good leader. So, and I also enjoyed the trustee workshop in Sacramento. I enjoyed getting to see everybody in 3D. And then I got to see, I got to see a couple of different presentations. And honestly, the funny thing is, one of my favorite presentations was from our attorney, Eileen, did one of the most interesting and, I almost want to say entertaining presentation I've ever been in about ethics and conflicted interests. So we've got a good one with her, too. And looking forward to whatever comes next. And also looking forward to going home. I can't stop yawning for the last 10 minutes. So good night.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Perhaps ending on a little bit of a sad note, I wanted to send my condolences, I think, on behalf of the board to Charlie Monahan, who passed away a few weeks ago just after retiring last year, after 20 years of service to the college, leaves behind his wife Stephanie and three daughters. So, you know, maybe there's something that the board can do and maybe send something to his wife Stephanie just knowing how important he was to the college and how important he was to everybody. So I can work on that and follow up with you guys on that. But yeah, I'll end it on that, and hopefully we can reflect on Charlie's wonderful service to the college community over the 20 years and all the amazing things that he did. I'd encourage you, too, to, Anshibodi sent out his obituary in the paper, which is really, which is really thoughtfully done. And he got to learn a lot more about Charlie than I had known previously. So for moving on to, I guess, 20 announcement of future meetings, we have a special that has been called for February 17th. And then following that, as I mentioned, too, it looks like we need to reschedule that to February 24th, depending on where we stand with respect to the board training for superintendent interviews. We could potentially move it to February 24th, but the goal is to try to tackle that, those new district masks on February 17th in a very succinct and timely manner. After that, we will have our regular meeting, our normal regular meeting in March, March 10th. And I will, Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think we're going to have another special meeting at the end of the month also for the final interviews. I don't know if the date or time has been selected yet, but it would be the last four weeks of February, sometime toward the end.
Okay.
I don't think we have a special meeting for that. I think we just have our interview time scheduled. And then we would confirm the new president on a March 10th meeting, I think, isn't that?
Does it not need to be noticed as a closed session?
I don't believe so. I will check in with PPL, however. We'll probably learn on the 17th.
Okay. And keep us posted, and keep Catherine posted, too, just so we can know as soon as we know, maybe just so we can have a placeholder in all of our calendars, just to?
Okay.
It's February 13th, go by quick.
We should have the 23rd to the 25th blocked out. The times will depend upon how many names are brought forth.
Okay.
So that was set already when we plotted out the process.
What date was that again?
The 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
Of March or February, right?
February, yeah. Those dates were put out, gosh, in December, I think.
Do we have times on those? Could you just?
No, it depends upon how many names are brought forth to the board. And then it's a matter of HR scheduling the forums and the interviews.
Okay.
And then there's work for us to do as well, as far as, you know, do we want a presentation? Do we want writing a sample, how many questions, that kind of thing? We have to set that up on the 17th so then they can, we can figure out how much time each one will take.
So we have a very busy February. I know you guys are going so much. If we can just get out tentative dates, because I didn't have that in Beth in my calendar as placeholders. And I'm sorry, that's definitely, I'm sure it's my bad. But if we could just send out a tentative calendar, just a document or something like that, just so we can have and put those, even if it's TBD and we don't have specific times. I just think we, I really want it, because I know, I guess, trustee Deluna is going to be out of the country, out of town on February 24th.
I'm leaving that evening, late afternoon.
Yeah.
So I can do stuff during the day, but I can't on the 25th. So I also didn't have it in my calendar.
I don't know what to say, because that was part of the scheduling.
It's probably our bad.
I need to have HR send that out? It's not something that I would do, it's something that HR would do? So let me get ahold of, I'll be in touch with PPL tomorrow morning, and I will ask them to do that.
Thank you. Doing so much, too.
That's really, I don't have the authority to do that. That's not something that I would do. So I'll talk to them.
Okay, okay, understood. Let us know if you need, if I can provide any support or anything like that.
I think it actually does fall on you as chairman of the board.
Well, I designate you, trustee Goff.
I don't think it works that way. I think once it comes to the board, I think it's all you, dude.
All right, all right.
Whatever you need me to do, but we'll talk.
Luckily, you can't see my fingers right now. Okay, we'll leave it there. Excuse me.
Okay.
Okay, well, so February 17th, that's the next time we'll see everybody. Thanks, everybody. We'll adjourn this meeting for tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
In Charlie's honor.
Here, here.